All right, Mr. Burke has given me the official high sign. It must be six o'clock, so I'd like to call us to order in accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws nineteen eighty-five, section thirty dash four dash eighty dash E. The following have been notified of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting. The Herald, the Charlotte Observer, CN two, NWRHI. If I could ask you all to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You've all received a copy of the agenda. Were there any adjustments or corrections?
No.
If not, that will stand with unanimous consent. And then our next item is public participation. I've got six cards here. We've got a fifteen-minute time window, so everybody can have two and a half minutes. And they were handed to me in a certain order, so that's the order I will call them in. When you come up, if you want to introduce yourself, give your name and address, and then you may start with your time. The first one is Valerie White.
Do you want to, well, and make the announcement about our technology.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. And for those who are watching, we don't have a screen. The parts are not in, so we're not going to be able to display anything. As soon as we can get the parts in, we will put it back to be functioning that way. So everybody will have to listen in tonight, and then you can go look at the materials that will be loaded onto board docs later on. So, sorry about that.
Thank you. So today you may hear the term "science of reading." What does this mean? To quote Dr. Moats, "It is the emerging consensus from many related disciplines based on literally thousands of studies supported by hundreds of millions of research dollars conducted across the world in many languages. These studies have revealed a great deal about how we learn to read, what goes wrong when students don't read, don't learn to read, and what kind of instruction is most likely to work the best for our students. When we think about the essential skills children need to build their reading brain, Goff and Turner's model, known as the simple view of reading, is quite helpful." This is the first little infographic I have for you, if you can turn to that one. You'll see there that decoding times the language comprehension equals reading comprehension. Strong reading comprehension results only when decoding and language comprehension are strong. If decoding is weak and language comprehension is strong, then reading comprehension will not be strong. So zero times two equals zero. Only when both decoding and language comprehension are both strong can reading comprehension happen. Two times two equals four. The next graphic shows you Scarborough's Reading Rope. It's another model that explains the simple view of reading. Excuse me, very nervous, too, speaking in front of people. The visual representation illustrates the process of how decoding and language comprehension subskills are each assigned is stranded in the rope. In decoding strands, you will find phonological awareness, decoding and encoding, as well as sight recognition. In language comprehension strands, you will find reading subskills such as background knowledge, vocabulary knowledge, language structure, verbal reasoning, and literacy knowledge. All of these subskill strands in the reading rope become stronger when they are more tightly woven. When all of these skills happen, a reader can comprehend text. By utilizing balanced literacy as the primary source for reading instruction, many of these strands will be weak, including decoding and encoding strands. Without every strand woven into the rope, a student will not become a proficient reader. The last infographic is Nancy Young's Ladder of Reading. It shows us that around sixty percent of the population needs structured literacy approach to become a proficient reader. Balanced literacy does not provide a strong foundation in decoding, which could contribute to sixty percent of students not becoming proficient in reading. To sum it up, students need more than what balanced literacy offers to become proficient readers. Thank you.
Thank you. I lost my cards, hold on. There we go. The next is Stephanie Foltz.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Foltz. I live at fifty-two oh-two Waterloo Drive. I'm a parent to a third grader and an eighth grader, both of whom have had incredible teachers and administrators here in Fort Mill. We feel very fortunate for that. I'm here on behalf of Moms for Liberty to address the resources currently being used to teach reading in the Fort Mill School District, especially to our youngest readers. I have a bachelor's degree in early childhood education and a master's degree in reading instruction and literacy. I'm a former classroom teacher and worked for several years as an elementary reading specialist. The students I had the pleasure of working with in both one-on-one and small group settings were referred to me because they did not meet the benchmarks for literacy in kindergarten through third grade. Most of these kids did not suffer from dyslexia or any learning disability. They simply had not been taught how to decode words and spelling patterns using the science of reading practices. Fort Mill School District currently uses what is referred to as a balanced approach to literacy. However, some key components are missing. This whole language approach is based on the theories of Lucy Cockens, wherein students are given a lot of exposure to print and taught to rely on meaning and context to begin to read. For instance, if a child is reading and comes to an unknown word, they are told to look at the picture for clues, decide which word could make sense, and focus on the first letter of the word before making a guess. Because only one out of four words can be detected using contextual cues, often that guess is wrong, and the child is left frustrated and confused. Research has proven that there are specific skills that kids must be taught in order to become successful and accurate readers. First, they need to understand phonological awareness, which is how to recognize and manipulate the sounds within words. Next, students must be able to instantly recognize sight words, or the most frequently used words in the English language. It is necessary for readers to be given opportunities to build fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension of both oral language and written text. Children also need phonics instruction, the explicit and systematic teaching of how to decode words using letter sounds and sound spelling patterns. These key components, phonological awareness and decoding, are the crucial parts of literacy instruction that are lacking in our current curriculum. Research shows that students become more competent readers and writers when given specific and explicit instruction of how to break the code of written language. If we add these critical pieces of literacy education to our current resources by adopting the science of reading curriculum, we'll all be giving students the tools they need to become successful, meaningful readers. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Boyle.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Boyle, and I'm here today on behalf of Moms for Liberty, York County. Currently, Fort Mill School District uses balanced literacy, Lucy Cockens, to teach reading and writing in all elementary schools. It is important for the parents listening to understand that there is a national movement to remove this method of teaching from the classroom. Several states have actually outlawed this curriculum from public schools. Legislation in favor of a phonics-based style of reading instruction, the science of reading, has been filed in at least five states, with bills expected soon and many more, including South Carolina. Right now, about sixty-six percent of Fort Mill first and second graders are reading on grade level. But buried in the data, we see another very important picture emerge. This is from the state report card. Only forty-eight percent of black third graders in Fort Mill read on grade level. This means that the majority of black Fort Mill schoolchildren cannot read on grade level. There is a racial disparity happening within the district. Additionally, only twenty-eight point seven percent of students with IEPs in third grade at Fort Mill read on grade level. This means the vast majority, seventy-one percent, do not. This is cause for alarm. We know that we have amazing teachers in Fort Mill, so perhaps it's time to look at the resources that they are using, a resource that is being outlawed in other states with a very critical eye. The writing is on the wall. Lucy Cockens and the three-queuing method will soon be banned by the state of South Carolina, and I believe that Fort Mill has the opportunity to be the leader that we are in switching to a science-based phonetics program. So I encourage the board and members of the public to learn more about this issue. You can Google "Sold a Story." It's a great podcast. There's also another great podcast to listen to called "The Literacy View." They have a great episode on Fonus and Penel, a meta-analysis of the data. Both of these podcasts go into depth on why the techniques utilized by Lucy Cockens are lacking and ultimately creating inefficient and non-proficient readers. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaclyn Bulley.
I'm here tonight to advocate for science of reading practices in our district. To give a little background, my name is Jaclyn Bulley. I'm a teacher, as well as a Fort Mill parent, of a kindergartner and a third grader. I have my undergrad as an intervention specialist and my master's in literacy of education. I have ten years of experience teaching as a special education teacher in both the resource setting and the inclusion setting in the general education classroom. And I, sorry, I also did private tutoring with structured literacy using Orton Gillingham training that I had received. I'm currently a literacy teacher at a preschool. I'm passionate about literacy. I have firsthand experience of using and seeing a variety of curriculums and theories implemented in schools throughout the years since I began teaching in two thousand and five. I also want to preface with saying I praise all the teachers that both my children have had in their time at Fort Mill. I think we have some of the best teachers, and their compassion, their experience, and truly just getting my children has contributed to their success. I'm grateful that my son had foundations through his kindergarten through second-grade time, as that is what his brain needed for one piece of the puzzle. Now seeing my daughter in kindergarten not receiving foundations and getting more of the balanced literacy approaches with the three-queuing system and leveled readers, I have more concerns, despite the fact she is considered an on-grade-level D reader, and she is a great teacher who is doing her best with what she has. While I know more phonics and phonemic awareness is being added, we need to really take a closer look at truly aligning our curriculum with practices and the science. My concern is not about the schools, or the administration, or the teachers. I want to call attention to the progress that we are seeing in other states adopting science of reading curriculum, and I want to see our district stay the number-one district in South Carolina. As other districts in our state adapt to science of reading training and science of reading-aligned and approved curriculum, which some are, I'm worried that we will fall behind. We owe it to our teachers and students to support them in this process. I think our best course of action is to stay ahead of the game and be true leaders in the state, to align our practices, routines, progress monitoring, and curriculum to the best of our ability, to really do the research and pay attention to what's happening with the curriculum and the effects it has on our children, both long-term and short-term, to reflect on current practices and ask ourselves if there are changes we should be making, like other districts and states, changes that have seen positive results as well. To further provide additional evidence, please listen to the podcast "Real Teachers Letting Loose: The Literacy View," episode "Fonus and Penel Meta-Analysis" with Annette Joseph, Nate Joseph. Nate is a real teacher. Thank you.
Lori Gallagher.
Good evening. My name is Lori Gallagher. I just wanted to start off by saying a big thank you to all of you for dedicating your time, talent, energy to the Fort Mill School District. We appreciate you and acknowledge all the work that you do, so we wanted to say thank you. And when I say "we," I'm speaking on behalf of York County Community Advocates for Public Education. We are a group of members of our community in York County who support public education. We specifically support retention and recruitment of highly qualified teachers, and we support a fully funded public education system. We support a student-first mindset, and we give great respect to educational professionals for being the experts that they are in their fields. Our main goal is to just be a support and a resource and to help spread accurate information to the community about public education. So I thank you for letting me be here. I wanted to highlight something wonderful in the district that I came across, and that was the first, I think it was called the Student Safety Summit. Some high school students and administrators came together to work to develop some, I guess, measures or to sort of brainstorm about how to, you know, be safe in the schools. And that was really an example of putting children first every day, and so we thank you for all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then last but not least, we have Jean Marie Holman.
Hi there. I'm Jean Marie Holman. I'm a structured literacy, Orton Gillingham tutor and consultant with my own business, Reading with Grace, located in Baxter Village. I've resigned in Baxter for the past three and a half years, having left the Boston area after twenty-five years of teaching. My background includes being a certified K-through-six teacher in Massachusetts in elementary education, literacy and language specialist, and trained and experienced tutor in both structured literacy and academic testing in both reading and writing. I'm certified by the Institute of Multicensor Education, Orton Gillingham, and in the Wilson Just Words Program. I have vast experience working in a regular classroom, being an interventionist and working one-to-one with students. I now consult with many families in Fort Mill District, almost all of which are or were at Orchard Park Elementary School, who are dyslexic or struggling readers that are not getting the Tier One general classroom curriculum they need in place early on to ensure they will be at less risk for reading failure. All students benefit from Tier One curriculum that is explicit, systematic, sequential, and multicensor for both reading and writing. Balanced literacy is not that. All students with neuro-developed brain alterations versus peers present from the start of instruction. The research states this is one in five children. These students may have a less optimal brain for learning to read, but have ability to become automatic in the mechanics of learning and experiencing the joy of reading just as well as their peers. These students can and should be remediated in grades K and one, which research shows is the optimal window for success. Fort Mill needs to use the best early identification screeners and Tier One general ed curriculum using a preventative approach. Balanced literacy does not provide that. The science of reading is a big body of research that the Fort Mill system needs to take seriously. As a district, we need to provide strong, evidence-based preventative education supported by brain science. It needs to identify children early and allow proper instruction in Tier One general curriculum. Reading and writing workshop is not that, nor is Jennifer Sarvall's reading strategies, which I'm trained in both. One size does not fit all, and the research proves explicit systematic instruction for phonemic awareness and phonics is the best way for most children to learn how to read effectively. In Fort Mill, there is a program in place for grades K through two, Wilson Foundations, and has not continued with fidelity into grade three as intended. There is no follow-through as the rest of your programming in reading and writing is balanced literacy. This program has also been replaced in some schools with new Lucy Cockens units of phonics, units of study of phonics. This program is brand-new, barely researched, and does not have an intervention component. I'm here to tell you that the program you already have is failing many students.
Thank you. I appreciate all the input. I mean, as you guys mentioned, it is a topic that's being widely discussed, both internal as well as throughout the state. I'm not going to pretend to be an expert, but I know that all of the things that you've brought up are being discussed and considered, so thank you all for your input. We have several items for reports and information, starting with a recommendation for this year's Hall of Fame inductees. And I think I heard that Mr. Hill is not able to be here after all, so are you doing that?
I'll do it.
Okay.
And I'll just do it from here, since we don't have all our setup tonight. For those who don't know, we have a Fort Mill School District Hall of Fame that was created, is Jenny in the room, probably is this our seventh or eighth class? Yeah, we can nominate up to five people, and this class has four. So if you see, if you ever come to the other building, building C, we have the Hall of Fame plaques on the wall. These are educators who have given a lot to Fort Mill and who were nominated by the committee and approved by the board. So tonight, let me just read what we have. The Fort Mill Hall of Fame Committee is excited to announce its inductees for the class of two thousand and twenty-two Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame reception honoring these individuals will be held on April eleventh at 5:00 p.m. So tonight, I'm just going to present the names to the school board, get your approval, and we'll go ahead with all the press release information for the April eleventh ceremony. First tonight, Tech Dowling. Tech Thomas Edward Calhoun Dowling was superintendent of the Fort Mill School District from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and five. He helped lead Fort Mill during the early days of incredible growth, and he was instrumental in implementing the district's first impact fee, allowing growth to pay for growth for the first time in the district's history. And I'll add Tech, maybe not a good decision, gave me my first chance as an assistant superintendent. Second, Bill Hilton. Bill Hilton taught biology at Fort Mill High School. He was awarded dozens of honors during his time teaching, including the distinguished Teaching Award, South Carolina Science Teacher of the Year, and he serves as the president of the South Carolina Association, served as the president of the South Carolina Association of Biology Teachers. Mr. Hilton is also in the New Bay College Hall of Fame. So congratulations to Tech and Bill. Betty, third nominee, Betty Thomas Mills. She was, the reason I'm skipping here is Mills, she was J.B. Mills' daughter, if you remember J.B. Well, no, I haven't seen the old Fort Mill people. Old Fort Mill people, you remember J.B. Mills used to predict the snowstorms, and he would get them right based on something to do with moths or something, but back when Fort Mill was small, she was Miss Mills. But Betty Thomas was born and raised in Fort Mill. She was a nineteen fifty graduate of Fort Mill High School, went to Winthrop University to become a teacher like her mother had before her. I had her mother as well in the seventh grade. She taught for thirty-two years in the district, twenty-five of which were spent in the fifth grade. And at the beginning of each year, we had, the fifth grade was held where Fort Mill High School is now, in the old sea wing, as many of you may remember, and I was principal of that school. She would start out every year, and this was a fifty-five-year-old woman, doing cartwheels down the hall to get the kids, to get the kids excited about school. Final nominee for this class, Jim Walser. Jim Walser was the head basketball coach at Fort Mill High for a decade, during which time he set the school record for wins at one hundred and seventy-seven. He spent thirty-two years in total at Fort Mill High, serving in different capacities as needed, including principal. Mr. Walser was also named to the York County Sports Hall of Fame in May two thousand. I'm really feeling all, he was my basketball coach, so anyway. I happen to know all four of these folks. I don't always know all four of them. But the committee would like to recommend your blessing on these four names to be admitted to the class of two thousand and twenty-two Fort Mill School District Hall of Fame.
Do we have to vote or anything?
You don't really have to vote. It says approved in the little bylaws by the, but it's nothing in the board policy.
Yeah, it's not really.
I feel like we always have.
Have we voted in the past? All right.
I think we did, but we had the same discussion. We decided, couldn't decide whether to do it.
Well, I would err on the side of better safe than sorry, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the committee for the two thousand and twenty-two Hall of Fame for Fort Mill School District.
Second.
Motion, a second, to accept the recommendation for these four inductees into the Fort Mill School District Hall of Fame. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And we'll have a ceremony usually in the spring, like in May.
April eleventh.
Okay, I missed that.
You weren't listening.
Sorry. I'm sorry. All right. Our next presentation is Ms. Holly Logan is going to talk to us about the latest going on with CTE and STEAM programs. Oh, and she's bringing an entourage.
She is. How about that? Have a team with me. Good evening, everyone. I'm Holly Logan. I am the Director of CTE, Career and Technical Education, and STEAM Education. I have here with me tonight Cicely Brown from Fort Mill High School, Nicole Lefebvre from Catawba Ridge High School, Joanna Barney from Forest Creek Middle School, Mandy Shamblyn from River Trail Elementary School, and Megan Rodriguez from Gold Hill Middle School. They're going to tell us all kinds of great things about STEAM education and career in technical education in just a moment. So we will start with STEAM education, just some updates. And for those of you that don't know, we have a QR code that you can go on and see this presentation in its entirety. There are some videos and some pictures and some fun things that we couldn't show tonight because we don't have the screen, but hope that you'll check that out when you can. So some STEAM updates for us. We started this school year tiptoeing back into STEAM a little bit after the last three years of having a rough time with, you know, we won't name what we've had a rough time with. It. So we developed a STEAM leadership team, and we met a couple of times to decide our direction for STEAM in Fort Mill School District. So we took a trip to Spartanburg with some administrators from all the school levels and teachers. We learned some wonderful things from some STEAM-accredited schools. We decided to make a STEAM lesson plan template for consistency, and then we are creating a STEAM database that will be available next year for all teachers to look into for STEAM lessons for their classes. We put out a STEAM application for new STEAM leaders in December, and after meeting with district and school administration, we chose our new STEAM leaders. We went to the school buildings, all twenty of them, and we surprised our new STEAM leaders and we surprised our returning STEAM leaders with some STEAM swag. And then we started our kickoff for STEAM at Carowinds. At that, we were able to do some team building, learn each other, learn where we were and what we taught, and then we did some STEAM lessons, and then we rode some roller coasters. So it was a lot of fun, and you'll get to see some little clips in the presentation of that. We then partnered with Pear Program out of Georgia. They came up last week, and we had our first professional development with them. It was wonderful. I'm already getting all kinds of emails from teachers saying they're using the strategies in their classrooms, so that was great. And then we are partnering with Clemson STEAM Department, and they'll be coming up to do professional development with us in the next few months. So without further ado, I'm going to let these teachers talk about how amazing STEAM is in the classrooms, so I will have Nicole Lefebvre come up next to talk about high school.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Lefebvre. I am an English teacher at Catawba Ridge High School, and I'm part of the original STEAM team. When I was at Fort Mill High School previously, I was part of that original group. And you might be wondering what an English teacher is doing using STEAM in her classroom, because if we know what STEAM stands for, it's science, technology, engineering, art, and math. So how am I incorporating these things into my high school English classroom? So here's my answer for you. We are teaching twenty-first century students. Our students were born in the twenty-first century, so we need to teach them differently than we were taught ourselves. So when you think about STEAM, what I actually think about is I think about the twenty-first century skills. I think about the five Cs of twenty-first century skills. We're talking about collaboration. We're talking about communication. We're talking about creativity. We're talking about critical thinking. And lastly, we're talking about caring. These are the skills that our twenty-first century students need to be successful in twenty-first century jobs. So the way that I am using STEAM in my classroom, I just want to highlight a couple of things because everyone else is going to highlight something as well. Let me talk to you about collaboration and creativity. One of the activities I did when I was at Fort Mill High School and Catawba Ridge High School is I worked with an art teacher. I thought, how can I incorporate art into my English Language Arts classroom? So I worked with Jessica Callaway, who was a wonderful art teacher at both Fort Mill and Catawba Ridge High Schools, and her art students taught my English students some different artistic techniques, which they then ingrained into some essays that they were writing about characters in Fahrenheit four-five-one. So we're able to be creative. We are also able to collaborate with one another. So incorporating art into my classroom was sort of a natural progression because I was an art kid in high school and college, and I thought, I'm going to push myself a little bit, and I want to collaborate with a science teacher. And so what I did was I wrote a grant through the Foundation of Fort Mill Schools, and I was able to get a class set of Spheros, which are like little robots, and I worked with a science teacher, and my English students were blogging with and creating podcasts with some science students. And then we were also using robotics to map out, oops, sorry, to map out the different experiences that characters were having within the novel. So what we're doing in STEAM is we're showing students that there's other ways of learning than just like that straight path of learning. STEAM is a way to get them involved, to be creative, and to communicate with one another and to build those twenty-first century skills. And if you look in your package, you'll see all of the pictures there. So what I want to do now is I want to introduce Joanna Barney to you. She is a science and social studies teacher at Forest Creek Middle School, and she's going to tell you about some more wonderful things that her students are doing.
Thank you. Good evening. I just want to continue with, well, what she stated. I'm a veteran STEAM leader. I started at Dobie's Bridge Elementary School, and now I'm in the sixth grade at Forest Creek Middle School. Continuing with what the five Cs look like in the middle school classroom, there are three things I want you to understand. Teachers are intentional across the district with our planning and adding these activities. All the activities that we integrate, it's not STEAM happening every single day, but if we use the five Cs effectively, they're woven into our units of study. And the last thing is that the five Cs increase engagement, and that's what we want our students to be, is engaged. So on the picture you'll see, or the slide that I provided, and then in the QR code, you could follow along with the pictures, the ways that I use the five All the activities that we integrate, it's not STEAM happening every single day, but if we use the five Cs effectively, they're we, they're woven into our units of study. And the last thing is that the five Cs increase engagement and that's what we want our students to be, is engaged. So, um, on the picture you'll see, or the slide that I provided, and then in the QR code, you could follow along with the pictures, the ways that I use the five Cs over one unit of weather teaching my students. It was about a four to five-week unit. So one thing that we did for collaboration, the students had to create a working model of the water cycle. Science-based, makes sense, but they had to collaborate and work together using what they all understood and the knowledge that they gained from our lessons to create a working model. And they were very successful. We had some clouds and some cups. Um, another thing is critical thinking. So within the weather unit, the students had to conduct labs, but within the lab, they had to collect data and then analyze that data to create a lab report. And then use that lab report to come to a CER, which is basically, um, a response to what they were learning and what they understood. So that's our critical thinking piece. Third is caring. Fort Mill School District, we are special that we add the caring to our Cs because it's important for students to care about others and to care about solutions or creating solutions in our community. So what I found, um, this part wasn't intentional, but I was walking around and my first period students began to leave notes for second period. Turn on your lamp, start your timer. They wanted to make sure that their classmates were successful if they had the station after them. So that caring, um, happened by proxy, but it's just something that the students are beginning to see and beginning to learn. Communication. Communication is not just talking with people. It's how you give your information and how you share what you've learned. So one thing that my students do is we ask experts. And you'll see that we were able to tweet Brad Panovich, um, a local meteorologist. And we asked him, what were some of the weather tools that he uses when he does his broadcast? And not only did we give him our opinion, he replied back and told us that we were right. And he gave some more insight, um, on an answer that we didn't even see coming. So that's a way to bring in the community with communication. Then for the fifth C, it was the culminating project. So my students use creativity to create their own, uh, forty-five-second weather forecast, where they had to research a weather map from their birth date. And they had a rubric where they had to use certain vocabulary. Um, there were other pieces and components that had to be in there. And they created their own weather forecast telling us about the weather on the day that they were born. So just again, I wanted to reiterate that the five Cs are being used in Fort Mill School District. They are intentionally planned without, I mean, throughout the, um, the unit. It's not every day. We just use it and we're intentional with what we're doing and it's bringing engagement to our students. And I would like to bring up Mandy Shamblin from River Trail Elementary School.
Hi, everybody. So Dr. Epps was my principal. I'm a Fort Mill native. So, um, I grew up, but look, aren't you proud of me? Look, look at me. You should be proud. I was one of your students. Oh, my goodness. So I grew up in the Fort Mill school system from pre-K. Honestly, I graduated Fort Mill High School in two thousand and three. And, um, I just want to say a side note, I did not plan this, but I think this is really important, a huge part of STEAM. So I grew up and I did not like school. I was a hundred percent there for the socialization and the boys. But I really honestly just was focused on my friends. So when I graduated high school, I had like a one-point-something GPA and all my friends were going to college and I was like, I gotta live with my parents. So I learned that, um, there has to be, I came, I became a teacher because I wanted to make learning fun and engaging. Not that your wonderful teachers weren't, Dr. Epps, because they were. But I think, like you said, the thing, times have changed a little bit. And I think for me personally, STEAM has been a huge passion of mine ever since we started the program six years ago. Um, it really sparked and changed, I thought I was a good teacher, but I feel like now I feel confident that I'm a good teacher and I'm proud of the work that I do every day. Um, and also my colleagues, very proud of the things they do too. So just to kind of piggyback on high school and now middle school that just went and elementary school. So we build the foundation. So the kids have to learn how to collaborate and a lot of times they don't know how. So starting in kindergarten and teaching them, okay, this is how we work together and these are how we solve problems. And it's okay if it doesn't work the first time, let's respond appropriately. So, um, working through that and these five Cs at the elementary level is so important because when they get to middle school and they face harder problems, they're able to handle them without, you know, freaking out or giving up. So I truly feel that the things we're doing in elementary school are truly benefiting our kids as they move to middle and high school. And I think that the experiences that we're giving them help them choose their classes and electives in, in middle as well as high. So I'll give you an example. So this year I've taught fifth grade for thirteen years, fourteen years, but then this year I was, um, assigned a task, lovely one, that I love, that to teach third and fourth grade, which was a little scary because coming from fifth grade to third grade can be a little scary. So, um, I decided that I was going to do the best and give it my all. So I thought to myself, how can we make the new curriculum, even though I'm learning it, engaging and fun? So I thought of something I, growing up in Fort Mill, I love the events that take place. So the Scarecrow Crawl is like the best thing that we do every single year. And my own students go, we go as a family. And so as soon as River Trail opened, I'm like, we are going to make a scarecrow and we are going to win. And we did, we did, we did. I was so excited. So then I thought, okay, how can we bring that into the classroom? Because the kids love it. It's part of their community. It's a family tradition. And how can I relate this to what they're learning? So we were doing a multiplication and division unit and Ms. Dager gave me the school credit card. So I was trying to relate how I was on a budget. Like I had a certain amount of money to spend and I also had a designated spot to build my scarecrow. So when we went and built the scarecrow, it had to be so tall, so big, so a real-world problem. And so I told all the kids that they were going to design their very own scarecrow and that we were going to display it in the town of Fort Mill, right out front of River Trails. They could not believe it. Like it was mind-blowing to them. But before they did that, we solved real-world problems. So they had to solve multiplication and division problems related to purchasing the scarecrow, how tall it is, all these great things. So then, um, I gave them a list of materials that they could use, but they had to create a scarecrow that went with our theme because we have to have a theme when we design one. So it had to go with our school motto, which was thrive and impact the world. So the kids all were so excited. They got all these materials and they built, built these amazing scarecrows. You should see them on your little slideshow. So, um, what was really cool is I'm all about the community involvement. So I reached out to Julie Hester, who is the Director of Events in Fort Mill. And she came in and she surprised the class with special guest, a police officer, she, um, the Parks and Rec manager. And the kids were able to get their scarecrows voted on. So like each one of them had a little sticker, just like we do in the real world. And they went around and voted based off the criteria that we set up for them for the project. Like it had to go with your motto, it had to go with your theme. And so, um, it was a really cool event and they actually went around, actually invited our school janitor, which, side note, she thought I was the drama teacher and I'm not. She literally thought that was my job. I'm like, I'm the math and like reading and like teacher, but okay, whatever. So, um, she comes in and she voted and like she was so excited, like so just this, it just gives me chills because the amount of excitement that I saw my kids like, like just getting through this tiny activity that came out of like nowhere. Um, and then what was even more amazing is that the winners got to features theirs. We put them in a little, you know, because we talked about the weather and how it has all these things. And we put them in a little container and they were displayed right outside our scarecrow in the downtown Fort Mill area. So, um, I want to say that STEAM is, Holly Logan has done an amazing job of gathering a group of teachers who are passionate about this and are taking these PDs, like I'm leading a PD with our STEAM, um, committee on, I think, March twenty-second and sharing the Pear Program PD that we went to because I want, I want you all to know that we are taking this amazing opportunity and sharing it amongst other people. So it's not just me and Ms. Shamblin's classroom, but it's like, this is a River Trail culture. This is a Fort Mill culture and we are so excited to do it. So that's the elementary level and back to Holly.
How could you not love these folks? I mean, look what they're doing in their classrooms. It's amazing and it's STEAM and it's important. So I wanted you all to see and hear from them because it's better to hear from the folks that are doing it than the one directing it. They are amazing and I appreciate you all so very much for presenting with me. I hope that you can see now just how important STEAM education is for our students in Fort Mill School District. And now we're going to change hats over to Career and Technical Education. So I have with me here Ms. Cicely Brown. It is CTE Month, in case you all didn't know, nationally known, it is Career and Technical Education Month. And I'm sorry, we're going to go with middle school first, aren't we? We're going to do middle school first. So I've got Dr. Megan Rodriguez, who's coming up, and she's going to start with where we begin with technical, career and technical education in the middle school.
Thank you. So career and technical education starts in the middle school, but for me, it also starts in the elementary. We are teaching our kids, you know, pre-K through twelfth grade. And so the STEAM initiative is starting with those same skills that we're working to build our students for career and college readiness. I was at Sugar Creek, I was at the elementary level. So I've been able to see firsthand how we grow our students from, um, being collaborators and communicators. And then they get to the middle school level and they're able to start applying those skills in other job-related areas. And this is, you know, just part of our pipeline of our students. So at the middle school level, um, we have two CTE classes, gambling computer science and gateway to technology, which is part of the project Lead the Way curriculum. And all of our related arts are done with an exploratory focus. So in sixth grade, our students get to, don't get to choose where they are. They are placed in classes. And then in seventh and eighth grade, they start to get a choice of the classes they take in their semester-long classes. This year, one of our focuses has been in all of our classes, but it's been really great to see from a CTE world, is working to get consistency across our schools and really our work with PLCs. Um, one thing that we really asked for last year was dedicate a time during the workday to plan with teachers at other schools. You know, we're an island. I'm the only GTT teacher at Gold Hill. So being able to plan with the other teachers has been really important and crucial. So we've been able to take things like family and computer science, it's doing cupcake wars and they're doing pillows. And every school still has some of their own, you know, favorite things that they do, but they're able to plan together and share those ideas and build off of each other's ideas. In Project Lead the Way, one of the things we did is we are making our sixth grade course consistent across all the schools. So we're adding flight and space next year. All seventh graders will take design and modeling and all eighth graders will take automation and robotics. So no matter what middle school you're going to, you're going to see the same projects and hands-on work. We also work with Katie McFadden in her career exploration program. She works with all the students in the schools, but then she also comes in and works with our CTE classes as well. And we have club opportunities. These are done by teachers outside of their regular responsibilities. So you have things like the Future Engineers Club at Forest Creek or Bulldog Robotics at Gold Hill. You also have the Home Improvement Club at Fort Mill Middle. And so all of these things are happening at the middle and then the kids leave us. So is what, um, Fort Mill has done is worked with Katie McFadden to do the First Look Program. And that's going to bridge our eighth graders going up into our high schools and so they know what to expect. And so I'm going to turn it over to Cicely Brown.
So after they get all of the STEAM and get ready for middle school to come to high school, they get to us. And the main goal in the CTE is just to make sure that they're college and career ready. And following the South Carolina graduate profile, the CTE classes are amazing. We're trying to make sure that the students, when they leave the high schools, that they are ready to go into the workforce and they're also ready to go to college if that's what they choose to do so. The goal for us is making sure that we have completers and certifications. So we are building our way up, we're trying to get certifications and more courses. And then currently from the data for twenty-one through twenty-two, we had two hundred and forty-two completers, one thousand one hundred and ninety-four certifications, and we're expecting that number to grow tremendously. With keeping up with the pipeline, we have been working with, um, Ms. McFadden with the middle schools and trying to do a vertical alignment where we're trying to give eighth graders all the opportunities to see what CTE programs can offer. Because there has always been a stigma that if you was in a CTE class, that it was more for those who weren't going to college. And now we know that that's not the case because we have a lot of students who are taking CTE classes, going into college and still doing extremely well. And that's an option that we want all students to know that they can do. And with that being said, in the CTE courses, they have the opportunities to have an internship, an apprenticeship. They get a lot of hands-on experience with working in the classrooms, doing different things within their subject area. And then the whole promise of the careers, all of those things are still there and they know they have options. And I always tell my parents when I meet with them for my internship in early childhood, that it's a win-win for both of us, the students, me, and the parents. Because oftentimes when they take these classes, that's when they really get to see if this is something that I want to do. And they have that hands-on experience. Unfortunately, I've had some students that took ECE and decided, yes, this is what they wanted to do and they kept it going. And then there were some that took it and said, mm, nah, I can't work with kids on a day-to-day basis like this. And that's fine. But the main thing is they have the opportunity to do it. And I always stress to my students that I didn't have that opportunity when I was in school. And that it's just, they're fortunate to have this. So increasing our completers, offering more certifications, that is a huge goal. Ms. Logan is working on implementing some more programs. CTE is starting to do more dual enrollment programs. So we are going to be very competitive for students who want to go to college or go to the workforce and they are going to be ready. So I'll turn it back over to Ms. Logan.
I'm just going to highlight a couple more things really quick, just some data because I'm a former math gal. Um, so we offer seventy-five courses between the three high schools for CTE. We have four thousand one hundred and ninety-one students who are currently enrolled in at least one CTE course. That's seventy-eight percent of our five thousand three hundred and sixty-one high school students in Career and Technical Education. All right, let me move on. I'm just going to give you some quick CTE updates and then I promise we'll finish. So new for next year with CTE, we're going to have dual-credit digital art and design. Um, that means that they're going to get two college credits, the students that choose to take this class, and they're going to get their high school credit. So that was approved by you all. Thank you so very much. And then we also were approved to have dual-credit media technology at the schools, which will also give those students two college credits and their high school credit. We were approved to have dual enrollment mechatronics at York Technical College, so our students can leave campus and go there and take those classes. We are currently researching and working on dual-credit health science so that they can get that, that credit for, um, college and high school as well. I'm working with York Technical College and York Comprehensive High School. I'm bringing utility line worker, possibly in the future. This is all researching stages. And then last but not least, cosmetology. We have been working on researching that, going to see some other campuses, learning about their programs, talking with other directors in the state, working with Dr. Eleanor Gladie Glover at the state level to see if we can't bring cosmetology to Fort Mill School District students in the near future. So we're very excited about all of the things that we're working on in Career and Technical Education. I'm hurrying, I'm sorry. I'm really excited about the CTE Students of the Month. So if you turn your pages, we started this this year and we wanted to celebrate those students. So the teachers vote, or I'm sorry, they nominate every month a student that they feel should receive this award. And then the curriculum department votes on, just from what the teachers have written, from the students, on who should receive that award each month at each of the high schools. And then we go to the high schools and we surprise them in that class with their teacher. And they receive a shirt that's, um, designed by a digital art and design student nation, Ford High School, that says FMSD CTE Student of the Month. And they receive a certificate and then a little goodie bag with all kinds of fun stuff in it. So those are our Students of the Month there for, um, this school year. Just super proud of them and the programs that they're in, that their teacher nominated them for. And then, um, we had a slide that says going viral. We were hoping to show you that we were going viral, but you're just going to have to click on the link. Um, we would love for you to follow us because we have some really cool posts for STEAM and CTE. So we're at FMSDSTEAM and at FMSDCTE on Instagram. We hope that you'll follow along on our journey. And then lastly, I'm going to ask these amazing teachers here to help me give out some, um, goodie bags. We wanted you to see what Career and Technical Education students do. So these are products that they've made in their classes that they wanted you to see. And I emailed their teachers and talked with them about what would they be interested in the board members seeing that they make in the classroom. So we have a list of everything, so you don't have to go through it. On the outside of it, that you can see that they've made, with the exception of media technology, that one you're going to have to watch later when you can click on your link. But this is from all of your Career and Technical Education students in Fort Mill School District. We hope you enjoy your goodie bags. And, and we have one more gift coming. Um, it didn't fit in the bag, so just bear with us while we go grab our last little gift.
A blood test.
We will bear.
Well, I'm excited about it.
I will definitely bear.
I needed to give that to my child that called me.
So while they're getting their last gift.
And I better be careful with this because the, uh, the dog is going to notice the dog treats if I take this in and set it down.
All right, one more thing, while they are giving out, they're getting their last gift. It was on the slideshow. But with ECE, all three high schools have an early childhood education program where the students get to be, um, interns and get to see if they like it and if they want to keep doing it. And Fort Mill has been very fortunate to have homegrown students right here from their early childhood program to come back to the district. And so for people that are in the audience who can't see the, um, the slideshow, if you had, um, Alyssa Romansky, Katie Ellis, Taylor Jones, Kaylee Grayson, Mallory Strode, Danielle Lyons, or Emily Elman, all of them were a product of the early childhood program, CTE of Fort Mill School District, and they came back.
And they came back and this is where they are and they're doing great. Thank you.
Thank you.
My lovely succulent has some instructions because if not, somebody's going to have to come take care of that.
I mean, I know we've been at this STEAM journey for four or five years, but it's exciting to see, it really now has permeated through the culture, through all the schools, not just the few initial STEAM leaders that we had. And the same thing with CTE, you know, every time Dr. Wixness comes and brings us another set of courses because I think the recognition that the administration has for a need to bring 21st century learning to our students is obviously evident. So thank you for what you and all your folks are doing. It was very exciting. Our next agenda item is much drier than that, sorry. All of us actually, everybody, including Dr. Epps, were in Hilton Head for the School Board Association Annual Conference this past weekend. I'll just start by saying I've been doing seven years' worth of conferences and I think this is probably my favorite, if not, it was certainly my second favorite, but I can't think of one I liked better. The level of speakers that we had, the quality of their presentations, the breakout sessions were great. And it was interesting because they, you know, a lot of the things we talked about were, they were less academic focused and more culturally focused. We talked about civility, we talked about conflict resolution, we talked about communications. We talked about leadership, selfless leadership and safety. Well, that's what I was going to say, and our very own Rich Todd actually did one of the breakout sessions that was extremely well-received because as we know, he is the foremost expert in school safety opportunities. So I thought it was a great session and I've got a handful of notes of things that, you know, spawned ideas that, you know, to bring back and talk about how do we do this more? Or in fact, one of the speakers, we liked so much, we'd like to figure out how to bring them to the district for something in the future. So I thought it was wonderful. I don't know what you guys would like to add on and share, anyone?
Well, I had the pleasure of hosting all of the board chairs throughout the state on Thursday. And so I actually got the slides from that, from our speaker from there. And it was interesting to see what some of the different responses were to the questions. And it was, and I don't know what they call this thing because that's way beyond my technological. Yeah, that, whatever that is or that. I want to call it Wordle, where you just text words or whatever and it starts throwing them up. And as more of them get there, they get bigger and whatever. It was amazing. I love that stuff, but I don't know how to do it. But some of the questions that they asked that created great dialogue in the room revolved around a lot of civility. What does civility mean? What words describe the nature of public dialogue in your school board, at your meetings, in your community? And so it was just lots of different things that kept popping up. What has incivility cost your community? So some of those were really enlightening. Some areas have the pleasure of not having great big words. They have very small words and that's beautiful and not everybody was in that boat. So that was the first day keynote guy that you all got the pleasure of listening to then after that. But it was very thought-provoking. My favorite question that we had from that whole session, and it was probably after lunch, they wanted us to have a debate, a polite debate about waffles, our South Carolina's favorite breakfast food. And we all sat there going, clearly you have not been to the South. And it was 89% disagreed, respectfully, but disagreed. And so we came back and explained to him that that was not going to fly in the South, that in South Carolina, our favorite breakfast food is grits. And 81% said that it was grits. Being a northerner who now eats grits, I even had to sit there and go, Matt, it's grits. Sorry, you're wrong. So it was just, it was really nice to be able to collaborate, to discuss different things, happenings, see perspectives from other areas and just have that time to fellowship and foster and answer questions. And, you know, you talked about Mr. Todd doing the safety program. I probably had conservatively 50 people afterwards come up to me, whether it was they were in the presentation or they heard about the presentation, but come up to me afterwards and say, I need to get in touch with him. The things you guys are doing, that was right up what we needed, we had questions about. Thank you so much for bringing him and allowing him to be here and so on and so forth. So it's nice to be seen not only as the number one academic district in the state, but also to be seen as the number one responsible because he was highly sought after afterwards. We had to break him away from people like, he's got to go now.
Yeah, I would say it was very well attended. That one was. And he did a really great job. I was impressed.
Yeah, and if I could speak just to what it was like to be there for the first time. So they're all saying, hey, this was the best one we've ever been to. And I was very impressed with all the speakers, all the keynote speakers and all the outbreak sessions. So, but one of my biggest takeaways was how prepared as a new board member I was coming into. And it's just a testament to our district because we, you know, being in that new board orientation, there was a lot of things going on that I was just sitting, and I even wrote a note and I sent it to Lippi. I said, I'm so thankful for our district because we came into this meeting so prepared. And so just a testament to our district on how well-run it really is compared to the rest of the state. We saw a lot of disunity. I would say there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on in our state that we just simply don't deal with. And we're very, very, very blessed to have that. One of the largest takeaways I got from one of the keynote speakers was the need to emphasize the coming together between, you know, that us and them mentality and making sure that a community is really working together. And so I'm excited about seeing those things, especially for Fort Mill. I think it's going to be really, really good.
I'll be short and sweet. Dang. So I agree with almost everything that everybody else has said, that it was the same amount of time as you, Ms. Spears. It was the best that I have been to. I definitely think that the keynote speaker on day two might have been the best keynote address maybe I've ever seen in my entire life. I mean, he was. Yeah, he was just captivating. He was a great storyteller. And he was really motivating when he talked about selflessness and selfless leadership and what servant leadership looks like. So that was really inspiring. It was good. I know Ms. Weaver, our state superintendent, has been invited to speak at large-scale events and it was good to see her actually come and speak to the State School Boards Association.
She had been invited several times in the past.
Right, right. So it was interesting because I haven't had a chance to see her speak in that realm. You know, I think she talked about a lot of exciting things for the state of South Carolina, a large sum of money going into a one-time innovation fund. She talked a little bit about, you know, overhaul of or revisiting curriculum standards. So for a district like Fort Mill, who leads in this state, I hope that as she's looking at things like revamping curriculum, districts that succeed are being reached out to and we have contributions to say, here's what's really working as a district. So that's what I got.
Can I just add real quick? As a newbie, Jo and I were excited that we were not representing some of the other places where new people work.
Amen.
They were very dramatic and we said, why would they do that? We knew not to do that. They told us right away not to do that. But we were told that we were being held up as a model to some of the newer board members of how to do things. And I think that's a compliment to our senior leadership who helped this board to be effective. I mean, I always knew y'all were kind of cool, but now that I'm sat on the other side, I know that y'all do a lot to help us look like we really know what we're doing. And so Jo and I had a great time going, yes, we're from Fort Mill. So it was great.
Did you flip your hair?
He did. I taught him. I taught him. It was great and it was really great to build relationships and have conversations and find bridges and middles of the road.
Yeah, I agree with everything wholeheartedly with what everyone stated. By far, but so this would have been my third, my third, I believe, right? So the quality of the content, how the content was used, when it was used, the quality of the speakers were significantly better than what I've been engaged with. Hearing from our state superintendent, she did a wonderful job in delivering her message. Some of the courses that I, or classes that I visited, one was alternative, was revolving around alternative class or school. So that was fascinating being a part of and hearing about point systems and all those things. And I know that we're working on some things behind the scenes regarding that. So it was wonderful seeing that. I just enjoyed, well, a couple of things that our state superintendent had mentioned was she had mentioned that I think was $100 million in one time.
Innovative.
Right, yes, in innovative category that she was mentioning. I think probably what hit me the most or the most positive was of the three that I visited, I heard more about the stress to us about listening to parents. I heard a lot of that and I really had, maybe I hadn't paid attention to it before, but it was quite clear during many of the classes and keynotes that I had heard that that was important. So it was a wonderful experience for me.
So just to add one more piece. On Wednesday at the Columbia State, I guess it's the State Children's Museum, I participated in a group press conference rolling out with the Municipals Association of South Carolina, a civility initiative that we actually started with SCSBA and them about three years ago before that bad word and thing came around. And so we have recommitted and rededicated to that. So that was the kickoff. But what was enlightening to that was the fact that there are many other states in the nation that are adopting the same program and are reaching out to, whether it's the municipal association or South Carolina School Boards Association, to get some guidance, some leadership and involvement in their states to help them roll out and do the same thing. And it's a, it is an all-encompassing, but it is not a singular conversation. It has to be a conversation that's held in the room and it has to be a respectful, civil conversation and program.
Yeah, I mean, as you can tell, I think everybody thoroughly enjoyed it. You know, we essentially do this three times a year. This is the annual conference that is focused on being the best school board members we can be in training and things like that. We do a law conference in usually in August to understand what's happening, you know, in major cases throughout the United States that are of interest to education. And then the legislative conference in December to know kind of what's coming down the pike specifically, mainly in South Carolina, a little bit of federal as well. And so it's time and money well-spent, I think, for all of us. So we enjoyed it thoroughly and we appreciate the district allowing us to go. With that, we have one other item here, which is an action item. Mr. Aminic, if you want to come up and talk about the elementary school plans?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I had put a memo in the packet, which I'm sure you read already. And somebody, what was that?
Thoroughly.
Good, good. So for the new board members, I think some of the prior board members know kind of how this works. But for the new board members, I wanted to go out there and explain kind of how we go about doing this. So tonight I'm here to get approval to go ahead and to negotiations with Shellco as far as the contractor for the new elementary school 12. And like I said, I put together reasoning behind the method that we used as far as going out for the bids. Typical method used to be going out for low-priced bids. In recent years, we've started going out for a more diverse type bid where it's called CM@Risk, which is the contractor at risk, in which they give us pricing now at the end of the whole thing. We go ahead and solicit the vendors to come in. We had 12 vendors this time come in. We pre-qualified those 12 vendors. Out of those 12 vendors, we picked four vendors that we invited back to go ahead and provide additional proposal as well as being interviewed. We had a committee of 10 members that ran the gamut of who was there. We had middle school principals, elementary school principals, maintenance folks, procurement folks. So it ran, touched a lot of different areas. We sat down with those folks that came in to interview, had a matrix as far as what they were going to be graded on. And through all of that, we ended up picking Shellco as the contractor for this particular elementary school. We also had discussions about the middle school seven. It's on the same site, so we thought the best idea was to include middle school seven, which we're not looking to approve now because it has to go through the bond process. But so I wanted to know if you had any questions as far as that memo and we'll discuss that. If not, I'm going to make a recommendation.
I have one.
Sure.
Jo, for acute clarity, what are some of the criterias regarding the grading process?
Sure. So it runs from everything, from the proposed project team, which is real important because they're going to make and break the project for us. The folks that come in and that are actually on the job, the project managers and stuff. So most of these groups, the four groups that came in, had brought those folks that are going to do the actual work with us. So it's relationships, it's knowing folks that you've worked with before that were really important. We went down as far as men, I mean, women-owned businesses and minority-owned businesses was one of the criteria in there. And they're all, comes out to a 100-point scale for everyone.
Is there anything that we did differently? Just a couple of different things that we may have done differently versus any other time we've done this exercise?
As far as bidding?
Yes.
I mentioned low-price bidding. That used to be pretty much the only model that the state let you do. And now it's called CM@Risk and Construction Manager at Risk, which gives us the opportunity to kind of go through the selection process ourselves and use, other than price, things such as the experience they provide, the experience that they had building the school. Shellco has built the school twice before, which was a big deciding factor. They knew all the nuances that went into building it. We haven't had a problem. They've been within budget and on schedule and we knew that. So that's been real important to us.
This is not the first CM@Risk, correct?
It's correct.
We did it twice.
Twice so far.
Forest Creek?
No, we did Kingstown and River Trail.
No, 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 as a CM@Risk.
Yes.
It was those two?
Yes.
I thought we did Coggeridge that way.
That's what I thought too.
I don't believe so.
But.
Maybe that's what we started talking about.
Yes.
Anyway. But I mean, I think we have, we've actually had fairly good success with all of our methods and contracts in the past. But I know we've had some neighboring districts that have ended up, you know, with.
That's correct.
Extremely low bids that then.
Couldn't put a roof on.
Were not able to be completed.
Yeah, that's correct.
And I think given the climate that we're in now and the nature of the change, I would be hesitant to have somebody low bid and then end up left holding a bag if they weren't able to complete it.
Correct.
As conditions changed.
And it sounds like you're not going with the low bid, but does negotiating after you choose the vendor. So right now we've chosen Shellco, but we're going to go into negotiations. Everything's open book, they call it, as far as pricing. They'll go, reach out to their subcontractors. They'll have 30 bid packages, which makes them more competitive instead of putting a number together. And we have the ability to speak with them and negotiate that.
It's sort of like the low bid happens at the component level instead of at the overall level, right? As they subcontract everything.
So they give us two things. They'll give us a fee, which is kind of what their profit is, which is pretty miniscule. Folks would not believe it. And then they go through those open book numbers. And all of that plus contingency equals to what the final number is. Once that number is decided upon and they give it to us, called the guaranteed maximum price, if anything goes over that guaranteed maximum price, they're responsible for it.
That's the key.
Which is key.
So it's an absolute.
That's exactly.
Protection.
And so far, they haven't gone over and have come under for the.
And we share, you can share or take all the contingency. So we work with them as good partners and we shared the contingency last time.
As opposed to the old change order process on the low bid.
That's correct.
Where you come out bad on the back end.
That's exactly right. This is all front-end, all open book, so it's a good process.
What's the timeline for the negotiation process and when you will get to that point of the actual dollar figure? of the actual dollar figure?
It will be a couple of months because they still have to reach out, they have to get three quotes for each of those packages.
And it's probably worth noting, this is the elementary school in particular and it's the one that we are able to fund for the most part, maybe not 100%, but largely with the impact fee money that has been sitting, waiting anxiously to be able to spend. And after resolving all of our differences with York County, we're now in a position to be able to start doing that, right?
That's correct. And we're hoping to start in April. Some of the back and forth with the county as far as the site work and such, they have to approve the drawings and stuff. So if there's one or two items, they send it back to us, we have to do what we have to do. So that's the only lag that we're having right now, but it's been going pretty smoothly.
With that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the administration to enter into discussions with Shellco to create a CMNR contract to construct elementary school number 12.
Second?
Motion, a second, to enter into negotiations with Shellco for a CM@Risk contract for elementary school number 12. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, that motion carries and you'll keep us updated and be back when we're ready for the next step, right?
Thank you, sir.
All right, with that, we are now to the point in our agenda where we are in need of an executive session to discuss personnel recommendations and legal issues.
To go into executive session?
We're now.